Now we are.
When does it show up here to keep me awake?
Uh, in a second, it's delayed. Cause it's gotta go through the internet universe.
It is one thirty, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Benzy County Committee of the Hall. It's January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. We are in the Frank Walter House Meeting Room. Roll call, please. Cunningham?
Yes.
You're not?
Present.
Markey?
Here.
Nye?
Here.
Rolus?
Here.
Bauer?
Here.
Or Sekes excuse. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes?
Motion to approve as presented. Markey will second.
If a motion in support, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, so moved. We have minutes to consider from January tenth.
Do not move as presented.
Hearing motion and support, is there further discussion? There's none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, so moved. That opens our first public comment. Being none, I will close public comment. That brings us to our human resources update by Jackie Palfy. Now, I've been told Jackie for feedback from the public that you are heard better if you're not close to the mic with a little bit of distance.
Okay, good. It'll make me a little less nervous, right? Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to give a brief update about what's going on in HR. A couple of highlights is this week, by Friday, we're gonna have the W two's out for all employees. Along with that, I understand there's a twenty twenty-two total compensation form that the that like the commissioners like to have included with those to let employees know how much their total compensation is outside of just their salary or their hourly wage. Rose has been incredibly helpful for this, so I'm very happy to have her help, and I just want to acknowledge that as well. In addition, I'm working with our new equalization director, Brian Lindsay, to be working on a job description for her position replacement. In addition, we're hiring a few part-time EMS workers. And then this past Friday, I got to go to the Northern Michigan Policy Conference, which is a regional conference for the economic development, and it was really beneficial. They talked about infrastructure and roads, broadband for all of Michigan, housing and childcare. So it was just really great to be there, and I got to see a lot of other communities leaders, so it was really great to be there. Did anyone have any questions?
Great. Have any insight from the comment or from the conference that you'd wanna share?
Well, actually, I was kind of embarrassed. I was like, what is broadband for all of Michigan? How does that, why is it such a push? And it was just really interesting because they gave the perspective of how it allows different people in the community to have access to healthcare with virtual meetings, access to everything that broadband has to offer. So I was just thinking like streaming services, cause I was just thinking about your entertainment. So it was interesting to see what other aspects that broadband to all of Michigan will really benefit community. So it was great to hear.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Excellent. Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate it.
Hey, that brings us to our building and grounds update to can talk about our meeting room policy. We've all had an opportunity to look at, review.
So this policy is specific to this building. It's not, it doesn't cover the sheriff's office building, the animal control. It's specifically this building, cause we, we tend to have the available public space. This policy is quite different from the old one. As you can see, I included both of them in there. The big change to this policy is that all of the scheduling comes to my office, and there's also a fee for service. So that's, that's standard across the board. Local municipalities charged to use their meeting rooms. We're getting into a situation where folks are just commandeering our meeting rooms. And when we have actual county business, we can't get into the room because we have attorneys just stepping in and zooming into a Grand Travis County Court call. I mean, it's just, and we have county business, and so this policy just adds a little more structure to the process as well as requires that fee for service. There's an application in there which folks then sign that are, that, you know, holds harmless the county if anything happens. And if there's damage, they have to pay for the damage. And it also helps strengthen the security for us. We know who's where and when. You know, between the calendar and having the applications, we'll know who's where and when for security purposes. We can't, we can't just have people in rooms and we don't know about it. And then if something happens, you know, how do we protect them if something were to happen if we don't know who's, who's where? A lot of the changes though are a lot of the things that are the same as, you know, the fact that you can use the room, it's to eight to five. You may be able to use the technology, that kind of thing. But the big changes are the fee to use the room. And that's really the big change is the fee to use rooms and the, and the scheduling coming to my office, which has already been in my office for a bit now. But this is formalizing that.
Katie, going through for preparation today, it didn't escape my attention about the room rental. You know, my immediate reaction is is that this building was paid for by taxpayer dollars. And how can I charge somebody twice to pay for something that they've already paid for once? Would there be any way, but I understand, particularly when you get out of town attorneys that are just jumping into one of your conference rooms. Is there any way to distinguish between the people that are using it for, I'll call it for-profit purposes versus those that aren't using it for for-profit?
Oh, we could require that documentation. You know, if they're a nonprofit agency, we could require that documentation or look them up on the IRS website if that's what we wanted to do. The application, we'll know, we know, it's the big thing. But really asking them for that information if they're nonprofit would be the easiest way to tell that.
I mean, cause I, and it's, you know, we're a small community. If somebody says, yeah, I'm with Grow Benzy, and we need to hold a meeting here, cause our facility's not available, that, you know, it doesn't take a lot of vetting to figure that out. But then I do clearly understand those attorneys that are using us as office space when, because they don't have any physical place to land. So maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, but I'm a little uncomfortable charging locals to use what they've already paid for.
Sure. It's an, it's pretty standard. It really is.
I heard you say that. I get that.
So, but if we don't want to, that's fine, but then we're not gonna deter the abusers.
I'd be curious what others feel about it.
Well, I have a question. Um, how often are our conference rooms being used by non-local agencies?
It's becoming more and more.
So the next question would be, how often do local agencies wanna use our conference rooms outside of this building, like outside agencies wanna use this in here or whatever, because they don't have the space themselves to do it?
So when you say outside agencies, are you saying like the townships, Grow Benzy, things like that?
Yes, people who aren't normally in this building anyways to begin with, like the treasurer's office, clerk's office.
Yeah. So outside agencies isn't, hasn't become a problem. It's individuals who are commandeering the rooms, attorneys, folks like that, that are commandeering the rooms. Anybody within here, the committees, anybody can use those rooms, our tenants can use the, the rooms, no problem. What we're trying to secure is the outside individuals commandeering rooms for long periods of time. That's the big issue. And it's also a security issue. If I don't know who's in the room, that's a problem.
I find it frustrating that, you know, these few individuals are making us impose a policy that people who want to be responsible about space in the building, who only wanna use it on occasion for the right reasons, is now gonna be penalized because we have to somehow reel in these folks who won't be reasonable about their.
Well, and I wanna be clear too, if an attorney wants to meet with their client for a Benzy case, that's Benzy business, and they're not gonna be charged to use the room. This is outside of Benzy business. This is you wanting to come use the room to have a meeting with your private attorney. This is, you know, folks, attorneys who are jumping on Zoom calls for other counties that have nothing to do with Benzy. You know, that's, that's what it's going to cover. Folks that are on Benzy County business or somehow related affiliated with Benzy County, they're exempt from this policy. They still have to schedule the rooms, but they don't have to pay. Yeah. Benzy County business doesn't have to pay for the space. This is outside of Benzy County business.
One, two, at least give you ten days ahead of time.
If they can.
There. I keep thinking like the advocates, I mean, that's a group, they don't use it anymore, but they used to use it quite often. Can that be reviewed, reviewed at an individual basis, who wants to use the room? Your discretion, I would think, or?
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, anybody can use, anybody's allowed to use the room.
Right.
I mean, we're not gonna turn anybody away unless the rooms. So you're saying, give discretion as to you don't get, you don't have to pay kind of thing?
Right. If it's, you know, depending on whether it's a nonprofit, it's not, not an attorney trying to make an extra buck and.
So we could add language in there indicating that if you're a not-for-profit agency, then the fee is waived. That's, that's fine. Or add discretion, but if you add, if you give me the discretion, now I'm gonna be in the situation where I could be accused of picking winners and losers.
That anyway. I was thinking like the townships, normally they don't.
Yeah, not since I've been here.
We set something up for everybody. You think this will solve it? I don't have any problem with it either, I guess.
I mean, we've had a meeting, we've had a meeting room policy in place for years. Dawn held the sacred book every year. And there was an application process in place all these years. It's never been enforced. So you guys have had an application process and you required insurance liability and all these things. It was never enforced.
So what if I'm an attorney and I come to you and I say I want the room, and I have some Zoom meetings, and you're gonna say, well, I have a fee to charge you. And I say, well, my, my case is in Benzy County, or my client's in Benzy County, or?
Is it Benzy County business?
Is that Benzy County business if they're representing a case in Benzy County or a client in Benzy County?
If they're in our courts, it's now our business.
So there would be no fee for that?
Yeah. Benzy County business.
I think it's just gonna get modeled, you know, okay, he has a case that's in Benzy County, but then he has other business to conduct while he's in there. I don't know. I just wanna make sure that we have a policy that we can enforce.
Yeah.
That's what my question was too. How is it being enforced?
I mean, they're signing an application, attesting to what they're putting on that application is accurate. So if they're lying, that's on them, and we catch it, we have the policy to say, you said X, Y, and Z, you know? I'm not gonna sue them or, you know, but I'm gonna say you need to leave the room or pay for it.
This isn't, I mean, you're, you're not doing it to be a revenue generator.
No.
And, and when you look at the conditions of cancellation, you know, not everybody even knows ten days in advance if they need the room or not.
Right.
So a lot of that's gonna be hard to comply with. Let me, so let me approach this from a different angle. What you're trying to accomplish is make sure the building is secure.
Correct.
And that people just aren't arbitrarily using the room, which then blocks it for legitimate business.
Correct.
Is there, without using a compensation strategy, is there another way to do that?
Not that I'm aware. Somehow we have to manage the rooms. So somebody's gotta book the room, and unless you're a county employee with access to the room calendar, you cannot book the room. You have to come to me or another county employee. So anybody who wants to utilize the rooms outside of county business has to interact with a county employee to do that. We don't have to charge a fee. We don't. Typically, folks do, so that's why it's in there. But we don't have to charge a fee if you're adamant that we don't charge a fee, but there needs to be structure as to who is utilizing the rooms for not only security purposes, but for Benzy County business. Because we can't have all of our rooms commandeered for private work when we gotta hold a meeting.
And, and I share your concern about being left up to your discretion, because, you know, you, you can't win.
No.
With that, but, and I'm, I guess I'm hearing the same thing from others. We're a little concerned about collecting money from people that already paid taxes here.
We don't have to collect a fee.
And, and I could probably make the argument that the time, time it takes you to record the, the money coming in, you might as well have not even collected the money, but.
But then in the situation when they need the technology in the room, now my staff is spending time to utilize it. When they don't put the room back to how they're supposed to, now Rick's time is being spent reorganizing and cleaning the room. If they leave a mess, our cleaning people, we're paying for that too, are now cleaning the room. So there's those factors too that would have to be considered as well.
Valid. How often does that actually happen that you gotta clean a room?
Well, here, I don't know. Like I said, the process has not, the process has not been in place. And the application process was not ever enforced. And we're now just finally realizing that this is becoming a bigger and bigger issue as we're trying to use rooms and there's folks in there who we don't know who, why, what, where, when. Or we have a gentleman who thinks they need to commandeer this room and spread their papers out all over the place from eight to five. You know, we, we have to try, we have to somehow do something to manage that.
So with respect to the technology, that's a real value-driven proposition. All right. So I have a big problem, especially people that are taxpayers here, charging them to use our technology. Can you, can we set it up where when the room's not assigned out or in use, that it's locked?
We already are doing that now.
Okay, so they have to come to you anyway.
Yes, and you'll notice on the doors of the meeting rooms, we put a sign and it says, you must come to administration to book this room.
Okay.
Because of the issues of folks just commandeering rooms.
So that, that's the solution, is you're forcing them to come to you because the, the room is locked.
But what policy says that I can lock the doors?
Well, I don't have any problem documenting that piece of it.
That's, you know.
I, I, or she explains and says, I don't have any problem charging them either.
I don't either.
And it's minimal. I mean, thirty dollars is nothing.
Guys, if the majority feel differently, then I'm willing to just move on. You know, I don't wanna beat this thing to death. Especially if it's a for-profit.
We try it for six months and see if it's effective and accomplishing what you wanna accomplish. I'd also be interested, I mean, we have the benefit of having Rebecca Hubers here, our emergency manager. Do you wanna come speak to what you think this would have any impact on safety of the building? You'd have to come to the podium.
The only immediate safety issue I had, like for this room, is it's key lock. So if for some reason we had a fire and that side of the building was blocked, and the only way we could escape was to go through this escape door, I know there's an escape door right there, but, you know, the prosecutor's office is swipe lock. And it's locked, so, you know, those were the only things I considered was that it's hard locked and that people, people call me, cause we're not making copies of the master key. Which is just not. So the other day, Parks and Recs is here. Somebody with a key, come and unlock the door. It's like, okay, so there's just, you know, we had to arrange that. So, you know, options would be to continue working on the swipers for the doors, so that everybody has that option of, of keys, and that is regulated obviously by who has access to what, cause not every key will open every door, rather than just having a bunch of master keys rolling around. Or someone's gotta find Tammy or Katie or Becky or Rick in order to open, open the door. So that was the only thing I could think of. But yeah, there's, there's groups in here that, you know, the floor ends up being stained and, and.
The chairs are all discombobulated. I mean.
And so I understand a, a fee is also a deterrent, I guess, to say, do you really, really need it or whatever? But if you're gonna make a mess, we have to pay somebody to clean it. So I understand that process, especially if there's big trainings. I'm probably the biggest user of this room outside of the county business, and mostly that's for CERT and county trainings, like, you know, radio trainings, first aid trainings, CERT meetings at night. I'm gonna have Rescue Task Force training probably in the building itself, but that's kind of county business, but I'm probably the bigger user of that. But I personally clean the room and put it back together and don't make Rick clean up after me because I, I just don't.
Sure.
Were we gonna put a swipe thing on this?
That's the plan.
We wouldn't have to have a hard, cause I, I'm thinking of Parks and Rec and.
Yeah.
That's the Valley Trail and all that stuff that you.
So we don't have to have a fee. Or we could just do a fee for for-profit entities. That's fine. It's, it, I just need some sort of consistency and I need a box that this fits in, and this is my box. Like, it can't be willy-nilly anymore. We have to have some sort of handle on it. That's what this policy's after. We don't have to charge a fee. I, I get where you're coming from, Commissioner Jana, on folks are already paying taxes, and I'm fine with that. But we just have to have some sort of policy in place, which adds consistencies to the process and backs up my office when I tell them I'm not unlocking the door.
Right.
You had an attorney doing what you said. Wrong with charging them. I don't have an issue with that.
It actually happened a couple of weeks ago, and I snuck in with a sticky note and said, get out. Cause I had a meeting.
It's evident at times where I can see attorneys, legal counsel, that I don't recognize that are using our rooms, and that's just because they have no other place to land in Benzy County. Well, that's okay, but if you wanna practice in Benzy County, you better be making space for yourself. You know, I suppose there is an issue however with a public defender. I mean, where are they gonna meet their folks, right? They, they gotta use the building for that.
They have an office downstairs, the public defender's office does.
Okay, all right.
I think if we also just advertise or utilize, we do have a couple of public spaces. The corner of this lobby out here has a desk and whatnot in it, so it's not like we're denying people access to be able to sit still and, and, you know, do what they need to do, is we're just not occupying a whole room for, for a solid purpose or letting them move chairs around. So I think Katie was going to redo the register of deeds area or move it to where the books are and stuff. If we just haven't, make sure we have enough chair space that a lawyer or someone doing business could still sit at a desk and, and do stuff. So there's enough space and, you know, tell people there's, there's a public space here and provide those. I think it'd be okay for the, for all moments like that.
And I think the, the cancellation policies are a little rigid. Do most people even give you thirty days' notice when they wanna use a room?
No, cause right now people just take the rooms, so.
I mean, a lot of times, you know, in fairness to what's happening is, a lot of times people say, oh yeah, we gotta agree to meet next week.
Yeah.
You know, I thi- I think it's gonna be hard to enforce that piece of it, and for me, if I have policies, if it's hard for me to enforce them, then it's pointless to have a policy.
It's up to you. I know some groups schedule, you know, Shelley has her singing group that was coming here, and they're scheduled out for the year. So, you know, there is situations like that.
You're gonna let her continue to use her room for free?
I don't think they're here anymore. I think they've actually moved. Cause they were after the workday.
So under this policy, would they be charged?
They're outside of the workday. So this policy generally addresses eight to five. We don't, we don't typically allow things after five. Even the old policy didn't.
I have attended here like OSHA.
Not in years though.
Yeah, it was years ago, but it was in the evening and it was here. We just don't allow that anymore.
We haven't, not since I've been here. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met right after I started, and they said, no more after work unless it was a county employee. So if the county employee was serving on a board like Parks and Rec, you know, that was different, but the general theme was no more when county staff is not here.
Otherwise.
Parks and Rec is walking a fine line, right?
Well, they text me and I lock the, lock the doors from my house, so.
Technically, it's still an exception.
Yeah, well, it's county business.
After five.
After five. I'd like it to be.
County business after five?
Parks and Recreation Commission. I would love the, for them to be during the workday. But.
You know, the fire chiefs we meet here, and we frequently go after fives.
Yes.
But I'm here.
And Tom King, I think is here.
Tom King's here, and we, we have current access, we can lock up when we leave.
Yeah, the issue before is an employee had to stay around to lock up.
But this policy wouldn't allow for an outside group to just show up at seven o'clock with no staff to have an event because they don't have access to the building unless now we're paying overtime to somebody like Rick to come and set the building up and unlock it. And if we are going to. And if we are going to allow things like that, then we should have more strict, um, guidelines in place regarding liability of insurance and stuff.
And I think it was also for security reasons.
Yeah, we don't have security.
Five unless somebody was like, was with them. Because they have to pull the gates to make sure they don't end up building.
Yeah.
Seen them pulled.
Sometimes, sometimes. Jesse Zalster is really good about pulling them.
So does this policy accomplish what you think it should without the fees in it?
Yeah. It's not going to deter certain people then, but that's okay.
I mean, is it good, then it's not going to accomplish?
Well.
If the rooms are locked, you have to get someone to come on.
Yeah, in that situation, it may deter.
Unless somebody is leaving and all that doors, oh, I'll go in while you're walking out.
Could it be a deposit where the money is there? And then if everything is done well, organized again, then they get that deposit back?
Now that's adding staff time and cutting checks every week and.
Because you have to receive the money. You can't just leave it laying on the counter until they're done. So you got to receipt it and then you got to expense or.
Yeah. I mean, I like the idea of the fee only for for-profit entities.
I'm, I'm kind of good with that. I mean, if they're nonprofit, like I said, and they want to be here to use the facilities. I can't see that happening very often.
It's not often.
Okay. I mean, we could start there and if it needs more teeth, if it's not accomplishing what it was set out to do, we can revisit. It's a place to start. I do wonder if under F, this is no alcohol and smoking. Do we have to put vaping and the marijuana? I mean, it's legal, it's legal.
Well, it says the use of alcohol or tobacco products is prohibited. Yeah, not like vaping's not. Well, but vaping is tobacco products typically.
Always.
And if it's hot, then it's falls under other issues. Yeah, tobacco you can do in public. You're not supposed to do the other stuff in public.
I hope you don't find too much confrontation, but I suspect as you start to implement this, uh, you're gonna have a lot of people, you're gonna be, they're gonna want to debate it with you. And I get it, you can say, well, that's okay, but rules are the rules. We're still chewing up fifteen, twenty minutes of your time, trying to collect the money and settle them down and.
Yeah. Honestly, other than a few situations that may arise for specific people, I don't think anyone's gonna have an issue because this is common for any other public building. You can't just go use your township hall, you can't use your government center in Grand Travers or Manistir, Lelandah, without some sort of reservation and, you know. So I don't think it's going to be a big issue except for maybe a few, you know, specific people. Um, I don't see it being an issue because this is, this is very common.
In my township, you have to fill out an application, you have to sign a hold harmless, but you're not charged a fee if you are a township resident.
And I could use, I've used theirs before. Every month after hours and they didn't charge me for it at the township.
Maybe they have.
So I'm good with just charging for profits.
Okay. How's everyone else feel?
Now, now you like run his idea of that we need to add more teeth to it later, we could. But we do need to know if it's accomplishing what you're seeking to accomplish.
Well, it, it helps accomplish the, we know who is where and when.
I would like to know, it's like, yes, this is doing what we want it to do or.
Okay.
No, this is not working at all.
Okay.
Need a motion to recommend to the full board?
One second. Um, so we're gonna change the section regarding, um, the fee. It'd be only for-profit entities pay a fee, but then the cancellation section, I know, Art, you had concerns regarding that. Does anyone else have any concerns regarding that?
It's just a fact of enforcing it, that's all.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if somebody pays for an event in two months, they've already paid me and they cancel, when I cut a check, I'm only gonna cut it for the portion they're due back. So in that sense, it is enforceable. Yeah. So we'll just amendment to read that the fee is specifically for for-profit use. Okay. Now a motion would be appropriate.
I'll make the motion. About this policy.
Is amended.
Is amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion in support. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Aye.
No moved.
Move on to topics for continued discussion, our youth advocacy dogs program.
Um, I'll invite the sheriff up. This is a super exciting program uh, that we are able to roll out as long as everyone is on board. We have the donation of a, of a dog from somebody from the community. And this dog would serve alongside our, alongside our SRO officers. So it's becoming more commonplace in schools that SRO officers have a dog or a pet of some sort to just help that interaction with the kids. And, you know, kids love animals, kids love dogs. And so it's just one of those extra, you know, it, if they had some fear with that, that police officer, that dog may help lower that guard even more. Because kids are attracted to animals. And so it's becoming very common. It's, you know, companion, it's to help with that relationship. So we have an opportunity to implement this program with the donation of a cute little black lab. Um, and so we're here today to talk about the program.
I have to request that the puppy is present.
Me too. This program, um, so the, the dog is being donated. And there are many, many donations already lined up to support this program. So the out-of-pocket cost for Benzy anytime soon is not there. Um, this program is being supported by many parents who want this program. They want our SRO to have this, you know, this advocacy animal. Crystal Lake Elementary School already has an animal up there. There's a dog that pick up every day. It's wandering around, service dog. Yeah, and so this is just, you know, it's one more way to connect with the kids.
That's probably a good dog.
I think the dog teaches more than the teacher. It's very well behaved.
Yeah.
So the dog was donated to the school system, to the school. But the school's wishes are for that, for our SRO to take over total care of that animal. Um, we have vetted the liability part. I mean, it's seven weeks old, so it's not biting anyone yet that's gonna hurt. Uh, but we've, we've looked into the liability on the county and on the sheriff's office and everybody include, involved. Um, the school has coverage while the animal is there. Um, and we are, our officer is covered and the county is covered anytime thereafter through our umbrella. So we've, we've already looked, this is not a new thing. As, I don't know if any of you know that we have a, a canine that is handled by our detective bureau, Lieutenant Castle. Um, a similar incident happened with him through the prosecutor's office that, uh, is available for court. Uh, people who are victims who need that little bit of extra, you know, help with, uh, the, the anxiousness that involves going to court. The dog lays at their feet and they get to interact with it, uh, leading up to this. So this is not a new thing. Uh, we're just having to, uh, make it our, uh, unique to this situation. So what, what the hope is, is that and this is the donors' request and hope, and it is also the school's request and hope is that um, you folks will adopt, um, or allow us through the school resource funds through, a, a line item through there, through that fund to receive donations for vet bills, care of the dog, grooming, all of those things. And therefore it'll be handled through that in and out, money in, money out. And our SRO would be in charge of all of that care for the, for the animal.
Who's going to be the primary caretaker?
A deputy mall.
So the funds would, uh, funnel through the county in this situation.
He trained dogs.
She.
I was thinking.
She, she has, uh, and she's getting help with that right now with the early stages. Uh, the people are, they're actually, folks are taking care of it now as we work out all these things. The other thing that we're working on, uh, as was done with Lieutenant Castle with his dog is the understanding that after school is over, after your day of duty is done, everything you do with the dog past that time, the care of it, whatever it, wherever it may be is on you and it's voluntary. So we're working on, uh, language that we're gonna have the attorneys verify and make sure that it's good. Which will eliminate any thought of, well, I've, you know, I've, I've looked after this dog for five years and an hour in the morning, an hour at night, and you guys owe me
For that time.
X amount of dollars. That's, that's being taken away as a possibility through this process. As was done with the other current canine.
What if somebody happens, um, with the employment of Officer Mall and she decides to go somewhere else? Does the, does the dog stay with Benzy County or does it go with the officer?
Those are things that we have to talk about. I would I would request that it be, that it remain with the, the district that it was intended for. Um, but I, I don't know how the school feels about it or the donor. But we will certainly make that a consideration when we have this agreement signed up.
Not sure how the dog would react to it either once, if it got separated from its primary owner.
Yeah. True.
It's almost like you need.
Is there gonna be any professional trainers for both parties?
Not at this time, there's none scheduled. Um, it's a therapy dog. It's not specified for, you know, like our, obviously our to one ex, from one extreme to the other, our, our canine dog that we use for, um, searches, article searches, uh, security and drug sniffing, you know, all of that. That is an ongoing, constant training. Um, this would be more of a, the basics, like you and I would train our dogs. Sit, stay, you know, come, all of those things. Uh, for sure that and, and manners, body training, of course, all that, all of that, so. And that, again, is a work in progress. The little fellows are just, just starting out, so.
That's when you sell them. That, that guy at, that's the valley that trains that other dog.
Pay a neuter? On the agenda?
Oh, yeah.
Just a few questions. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Look. Good.
So, uh, th- this isn't, you're not asking for additional funds in your budget for this?
Not whatsoever. We anticipate so, totally self-funded.
Why are you required to bring this to us?
Because we want to funnel the, our, our, we think that it'll be seamless and clean if we funnel the funds that people will give or the care of the dog through our SRO program, because then it makes it kind of complete, like we own that, that portion of it. And our, and our officer has access, be, being the caretaker, to then uh, access to those funds for the care, because they're gonna be responsible for the care.
You feel.
If that makes sense.
You feel confident that you're gonna be able to arrange this in such a way that even after hours, when it's with the officer, that those aren't billable hours to us?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we do that now.
And you feel confident that we can do that?
Yes, absolutely. That's already understood. It's already been talked about. We just have to get it in writing, approved by legal so that it's, it's binding.
Then the only two things that I'd like to add, and I don't know if this is where Bob was going or not, but I, I heard that it's kind of a passive role, but I would really encourage you to get some professional training in. So the dog's not particularly aggressive with people. You don't know how animals are gonna react and it'd be worth the investment. Otherwise, we could be dealing with this through a lawsuit or insurance claim. And my immediate reaction to where does that animal belong? If the officer who's been with them for several years, I think you need to have a policy that says it goes, it follows the family. Because I, I have to think that that would really be disruptive for the animal. Just, just my thoughts without any real experience, sir.
The only other observation I would make is that we're trying to be pretty diligent about having certain, um, items go through the correct committee with a recommendation that comes to the board. Um, has this project been considered by the SRO committee? Um, should it, should it have gone to committee before it came to us, since we're requiring that of most other things?
So this is a brand new thing that was approached to us by the superintendents who serve on that committee. Um, so as far as the details, um, it'll be appropriate. We'll bring it to that committee and that committee's meeting here very soon, so we can talk about it at the committee. But the school approached us.
The nineteenth. Kind of meet every two months.
Yeah, every month, every other month.
So we could, we could make the approval or make a recommendation subject to it being vetted by the appropriate committee. And maybe if we could see a policy that shows that, uh, I know it can't be held harmless, but I'm more concerned about protecting the county in, in case there's an incident. You know, I understand we're gonna have the dog under control, but it only takes one thing to happen and, and suddenly we're in court. We're trying to do all the right things, but, so I'd like to see a policy or some type of procedure that shows what the practice is. Um, so that we have done our due diligence in that level too.
Yeah, there are ways to undo or correct before it happens, things like toy aggression, food aggression. And, you know, I'm not sure if the officer who's gonna be in charge knows those tools. Uh, so if we, we do due diligence to make sure those things are nipped in the bud before they develop. Um, we just, we're protected, kids are protected. And I also think the policy, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Jeanette, that, you know, I think it should be part of the policy that the dog goes with the person who cares for it primarily, should anything happen. Perhaps this officer will stay with Benzy County for a long, long, long time and that won't be an issue, but, um.
We're hopeful.
It's something that needs to be considered. So when it comes up, we're not like, oh, we didn't think about that. We have thought about that.
Yeah.
And if your committee, uh, after some thought feels differently about it, I'm open to the conversation. I'm just looking at the welfare of the animal, that's all.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make an effort to make some kind of motion to move this along, okay? Um, Jeanette makes a motion to recommend to the full board consideration for a youth advocacy dog program, subject to documentation outlining um, what helped me, outlining the, uh, procedures related to this activity. And what else did we say?
That the funding would
That.
Funds would go through our SRO line, uh, with appropriate, after speaking with the other group, the rest of the group in our SRO, uh, I can't come up with a word.
So the procedure policy as was, as well as the committee's recommendation.
Committee, there you go. Yes, sir.
Boy, they mucked that up. Clear as mud to me. One second.
Gotta read that back, Tammy.
Recommend to the board of commissioners, consideration for a youth advocacy program subject to documentation outlining procedures related to this activity with funds going through the SRO line.
SRO fund.
SRO fund.
And the, and the committee's, uh, recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a motion in support? Is there further discussion?
Yeah. Um, we won't meet till we already have another board meeting before that school committee meets, one thing. And I don't know how old the puppy is, but they need to be worked with.
They will.
They need to be worked with it today, so, yes, I'm kind of looking at, kind of stuck commitment. They need to be worked with it today. So, yes, I'm kind of looking at, kind of stuck commitment immediately. Otherwise you lose a lot of ability to train a dog if you don't start out immediate. So I don't know how to work that.
So the, the school and youth resource officer committee meets February 21st. So in your motion, um, would you like to add for consideration by the final board at its second meeting on the 28th?
Whatever.
And then that would cover the, that committee, um, being able to provide that recommendation.
That makes that dog in about 11 or 12 weeks old.
It's already being worked with. Yeah. Yes. No, another family has it right now because technically this process, it isn't approved for the county. But given the donor.
Being implemented into the school.
Yeah.
Already.
Yeah.
And I'd like to add that although this is, this was brought up and brought on by Frankfurt, uh, school system. Uh, as in everything we do with our school resource officers across, you know, they're, they're, they're working for the county schools system. This animal, this dog will be the same. It may wear a
Purple collar.
Purple collar, as you see in the picture. But everyone's under the understanding, the agreement so far that we've talked to, that this is a countywide program. So nobody's going to miss out. It's going to reach out to everyone equally, all the kids.
So we need a purple and red collar.
Does the puppy have a name?
Briggs.
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 Officer Briggs.
Yeah.
I, I know that from somewhere. There's an officer Briggs. Where do I know that from?
There's a teacher Briggs.
Some TV.
At the school. I don't know. I don't know.
Never mind.
At the high school, Benzy.
So I'm, it causes me to ask another question though. Do you have to have a special arrangement documented with the Frankfurt School System to bring the dog in there?
It's going to look like. I, we don't know. It's, uh, it's whatever their policy allows is, it's not. It's not something that we have to have an agreement with them with.
Okay. So you could bring the dog in there without talking to them about it?
Correct. It's part of the SRO.
It wouldn't be great business to do that, but
Yeah.
Being that the dog was initiated and ju- and came from them, we have that basic understanding. If that wasn't the case, I wouldn't just walk in there, have my officer walk in there without, you know, speaking to them first, of course.
Yeah. It's a basic understanding until the school administrator changes or until their board changes. That's why you memorialize these things.
Yep.
One more question. Does this afford the opportunity, if someone else donates another dog, they have two, one with each officer? And then would the other SOR officer be willing to take on that additional responsibility?
That question has not been asked or answered yet. Um, like we, like stated prior, there is a Betsy Valley and I, I understand the Crystal Lake. What, what was that? Dog was a, belonged to a a long-term sub who has now moved on, I think. Unless you still see it.
Yeah, the dog was just there last week.
Okay, I could be wrong. I heard that that was about to be a thing of the past because of that arrangement, so.
There been any concern, uh, discussed about kids having allergies? I mean, I know that Betsy Valley, it's a standard poodle. I think they're hypoallergenic and they don't shed. My sister's is a doodle for their schools.
My dogs behave as well as.
I have not had a conversation with
I don't know.
School, but.
Had any issues with.
That's a question maybe the school can answer.
Allergic. I'm assuming, assuming, of course.
I mean, they would have.
They will know not to engage.
It's kind of hard for a kid. All the other kids are rushing to play with the puppy or dog. Well, I gotta sit back and I'll do that.
Thirty years ago, we wouldn't have been this cautious.
Yeah, right? So we have motion in support, I believe.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So moved.
Thank you.
I think it'd be important if we did meet the puppy though.
Alan Mauer says there's two more puppies up at the shelter, if you would like another one. Two puppies were brought in. We can teach the cats to go on a toilet.
Sheriff, I got two 11-week-old black lab.
Watch out.
Get one on, start a kennel.
Hey, uh, topics for continued discussion. Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, broadband project.
I just wanted to give a quick update on the broadband project. Um, I followed up with Don from Coal Stoker again today on our contract and he finally sent me a response. So we're waiting to get that contract signed, obviously, because legal hasn't fully approved it. It's very, um, comprehensive and cumbersome, this topic. And so that's why it's taken a minute. But that has not stopped the work of Cherry Capital and Tim on working. And so right now they're, um, still weeding through the data that was put out for the BDC data. So that's the, um, reporting agency that all the telecommunicators report their service to. So they're still weeding through that data because satellite data was well over-reported. And so it kind of muddies the waters a little bit. And so he put it as they're still going through the fabric locations of the data. Fabric is the broadband serviceable location. I don't, I don't come up with these things. So they're still going through the fabric. They're working on doing some GIS mapping with different overlays so that they can map, you know, where there's no service, where there's service of the different speeds and so forth. So they're still working through that data. In the process, uh, we're, they're starting the application for Robin. So the Robin grant funding window is open right now. So they're working on not only weeding through all of that data that still obviously has some imperfections. They're starting to really put together that application project as well, or project application as well. So that's a really good thing. So things are still moving forward. Um, they are still on track to, um, begin any sort of digging or anything for this project for spring. So they're working right now as well as charter on their ARDOF locations. And so we're still on track for them to, um, start rolling out this specific project in spring so that they can start connecting folks from there. Um, so that was kind of the update I wanted to give you. There's still things going on in the background. The contract has not been signed yet. So therefore we haven't sent any funds either to Cherry Capital.
And the consultant that we engaged, they're still actively involved, right?
Yep. So Mitch and Tim go back and forth quite a bit, um, with some very, um, very detailed, lot of acronyms. I try to understand the emails. They always copy me, which is very gracious. And I always read them and there's always 47 acronyms that I have to say, what do those mean? Or I Google it. Um, but they're still going back and forth, Mitch and Tim. Um, you know, they're making sure to attend the different webinars that the My High Office is putting on. And Tim is, you know, as they put the map together, he sends it to Mitch and Mitch is able to kind of go through that map and say, okay, well, this point doesn't look like it's meeting this point on the GIS map. So then they're working together to tweak those maps to make sure that they're accurate as they can be. So Mitch is still engaging, um, with Tim in this process.
My question would be this, um, location that we've secured for the tower, for the 911 tower. Is that an ARDOF-covered area or is this something that Tim is going to make a priority to serve in our project moving forward? And we know we have to have fiber there.
So that's, so Tim's part of the equation, but to get the fiber to there is Peninsula Fiber Network. Peninsula Fiber Network is part of the Open Access Consortium that they've created, Peninsula, Cherry Capital and, um, Eclipse. So they're all working together. That is separate conversations that aren't necessarily included in this, the Cherry Capital, uh, Robin Grant. Because it's my understanding that Peninsula Fiber Network is also going for a grant for funding to expand, um, fiber itself. So they're kind of running concurrent at this point. It wouldn't, it's not part of Cherry Capital's actual project, is my understanding. Cause Peninsula Fiber is also working on a project and a grant application.
So we're confident as a county that that fiber is going to get to.
We are so hopeful.
Okay. So I have a email chain between Tim, that's the Cherry Capital.
Yeah.
Just make sure I got the right Tim.
Yes.
Tim and, um, a gentleman from POFN. I forgot his name as well.
There's another Tim there, I think.
Yeah. So we're just kind of in a loop and I, I bring it forward every once in a while. So they know the address that I'm looking for. They know, uh, my needs. They know that we're trying to coat tail on broadband, even though it's a separate project and um, I've been in communication with both just in the last month. Just says, yep, we're, we're in a grant process right now. So just hold on.
Yeah. So the, the Robin Grant is open now for a little bit longer. Well, it just opened two-ish weeks ago. And so it's open for a while. I want to say 60 days. Um, so they're working through that whole process. And remember the, the whole premise of the project that we're helping to support is to hopefully put us at the front of the line for that Robin funding, because it shows our due diligence to expand the internet.
Already.
Yes. So that's kind of where I'm at with an update. Um, when we really, uh, start getting some things moving, when we get the contract signed and that kind of thing. Um, and when Tim has those maps more formalized, I'll have Tim actually come before the EDC and this board to present, but right now I didn't feel the need for him to drive from Elk Rapids for what I just said.
Any other questions regarding broadband? Okay, we'll move on to our Headley conversation.
So I put a book in front of all of you, which you probably all already maybe have this book. This is an old book. So this is the manual that Mitch's administration had put together in their efforts to start educating the public on Headley and the general operating mileage, the rollback, what all of those things mean. I put this in front of you as a conversation starter. I have not updated anything in this binder. It's a conversation starter. What do we want to do with Headley? Is this approach the approach we want to take or is there a different approach? Or do we want to put it to bed for another year? That's what I'm wondering.
If we pursued it, where, where would it be timewise?
This.
November or what?
We would hold off into, um, 2024 for an election. The only jurisdiction that has an election this year pending any potential recalls is the city of Frankfurt in November only. So if we were to hold any election this year, we'd have to pay for it, which I strongly suggest we avoid that. So this is, I want to start the conversation now for a plan of bringing things forward in Nov- 2024, if this is what the board desires.
So just to revisit the conversation that started, what was this, two years ago, three years ago?
Pre me.
Maybe for Karen's benefit a little bit. We know that in the process, we have to by statute form an allocation board, which is specifically set out who serves on that board. And it's, it's somebody designated by the courts. It's a township representative. It's, it's spelled out. And this allocation board would be the one deciding what a Headley adjustment or override, whatever we want to call it, would be seeking to accomplish mileage wise. Am I saying that correctly? Everybody on board with that?
Mm-hmm.
I think we've, we touched on the subject. Once the allocation board made their determination. So, so to put it differently, the Board of Commissioners does not decide. So back in 1982, I think it was, our general, uh, fund was funded with 5.2 mils. 5.9 mils?
5.29.
5.29 mils. And we've rolled back to our current 3.0.
3.4. Three, three, seven, eight or something.
Because of that word indefinite in the mileage back in 1982. Um, so what we'd be seeking to do is to get not just a reset, but removal of that word. So we can be like so many other communities who every five years or so go back to their voters and say, would you reset us back to where we were five years ago? And invariably, um, the answer is yes, in the communities that we're aware of. We do not have the luxury of that option. So we continuously, Benzy County rolls back. I guess what my question would be, and I'll be quiet, is what did we decide if we formed the allocation board and they made their determination, how long was their decision put for?
And that's what I'm trying to find right now. There's a legal opinion out there regarding that because April 1st is a specific deadline that if it's created, then that committee is only good until April 1st. And so we'd have to, we'll start the conversation now as to what we want to do. But then it's the timing for establishing, actually officially establishing that committee. We have to fall within certain timelines with on the calendar. Um, so I'm trying to find that legal opinion.
It's a legal opinion in the head.
Right.
I've read it too and time spans.
I think it's like.
Not a very long window.
Yeah.
You have to have all these other entities on board. Make the recommendation. I think Board of Commissioners still has the authority to say, we're going to take it or we're not going to.
To accept it.
Recommendation.
You know, we don't, we don't say, this is what we're going for. That board gives us a recommendation. Time frame is.
It's March, April.
It's April, it's April something, yeah.
And we get to go forward from there.
Right.
Whether it's June or November. But there is time on that at all of us.
Mm-hmm.
I can tell you that my township, um, was running, I'm just going to use generalities here, about two-thirds of what they were used to, uh, general fund-wise. And so this most recent election they had where they asked for a, um, a fire mileage for the 2.5 mils that passed, you know, took some pressure off of their general fund. Supervisor is still in support of this Headley consideration, but you know, you take the school bond on top of the recent millages that passed on top of the additional 2.5 mils that was approved. Um, my townships had some pretty heavy tax increases.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Got the ARPA money. It's going to be tough. Say, hey, I'm broke.
No, we've made that argument every year that we've talked about this.
I'll continue to do that.
But I've didn't, you know, you know, the increase in the general mileage, there wasn't one word about it. People, we explained what we're using the money for. People voted in favor of it. That was it. I think that there's, there's a time that you can be overly cautious. And we've been talking about this for probably close to five years.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I'm disappointed that we even have to wait till next year, but I hear what you're saying about the cost of elections. But we are, if nothing else, we're road blocking townships. I know that I have a couple of townships that would love for us to deal with this, so that they can address it themselves also.
Also I have one with huge general fund that don't leave.
Oh, that takes safety. That's whatever I want to address.
Oh, they want it though.
Yeah, but you know, it's, and you've heard me say this in the last year. It's less about do I pay taxes and more about how do you use my tax money? And I don't think that we can go into this because, well, we want to raise more money so we can contemplate doing something. I think that we have to have a plan in place in how we're using the money. And for me, uh, what I'm asking them to do is make an investment, because I then want to make an investment in our community, whatever that might be.
Brought up Dale. There was another $400,000 that we added to the general fund just by having.
It might even meant a penny more.
I'm one of the people that kind of remember that kind of stuff.
It's, it, it, it impresses me how millages just get approved around here. And sometimes you can oversell something. And we, when we first started this, as I look back on it, we were trying to oversell it. We're, we're, we're working way too hard.
Well, we were counting, uh, being able to roll back other or special millages. And I don't know that that's the correct approach either. Now you have some history there. We could.
Mm-hmm. So, um, appointments for the tax allocation board shall be made before the second Monday of April and they hold office for one year.
The ISD is on there, right?
And the county treasurer, there you go.
ISD and three stairs.
Yep.
The county treasurer, the chairperson of the Board of County Auditors, if there is a board, and if not, the chairperson of finance. The intermediate school district superintendent or representative, a resident of a municipality, a municipality within the county, selected by a judge, probate judge. A member not officially connected with or employed by any local unit of government. A member who shall be a township supervisor. So that's, that's who.
I, I think.
I think at the end of the day, when we talked about this, if I'm remembering the conversations well, we talked about having the flexibility, um, with the general fund not rolling back to the degree that it has to right-size the millages. It wasn't so much about bringing in more revenue. It was having the option to say, do we really want to be a menu mileage heavy county? Like we are right now.
Thirteen special millages. Thirteen special millages.
Right.
There's no question. And, and we did talk about being able to.
Bundle.
Yeah, bundle, bundle some of them. I mean, that's what I've been out in the public. I hear that frequently. You know, hey, can you, can you stop assessing us so many villages? And I don't think they're saying, they're just tired of seeing it on their tax roll. Most county, counties don't have as many villages as we have, number one. And if I remember right, there was only six counties that had, that had this mileage on there indefinitely. Out of what, eighty-three counties in the state?
I think it's down to like.
It's probably down.
It's down to like two or three now.
Really?
Yeah, I. Somewhere I saw a list of every village of every county, every village for every county. And it's down to under five. It's just a couple now who are still at indefinite.
This was quite a discussion at the Northern Michigan Counties Association that you're going to be going to. We talked about this frequently. About the need to uh, do something with Edley, because we weren't the only ones that were stuck there.
So the allocation board would essentially make the recommendation to remove the word indefinite and make it votable. Over a certain duration of time. And they would make the recommendation of what the reset, what mileage level the reset would be at.
And then it would come before this board.
Nothing else. I think we need to start the prod, this process sooner than later. I mean, we have to look at the timelines, but um, we need, we need to get this fixed.
You can see there was a lot of time invested in it already.
Toured a couple of questionable colonies like Livingston.
I'd forgotten about that. And that was a real treat. Anyway. But the timeframe says we can't really start this till here from this April. Correct? Or am I misreading that?
Well, so the appointments shall be made. Before the second Monday in April and appointments only last one year.
Wouldn't get it on the ballot, would it? Not all twenty-four.
Which is twenty-four makes most sense.
Started just April.
Well, if you started, if you wanted it on the August ballot of twenty-four. You'd have to have that, but you'd, you'd put your committee together now because it's good for one year.
Right.
Then you would develop the language. It wouldn't have to be in by uh, like May, I think. For uh, the August ballot, July or August for the. November ballot. So you'd want to put that committee together this year, knowing that it's um, you can keep them together for one year. You wouldn't want to be trying to put it together next year.
Committee have to still be in. Together when it goes to the ballot. If they made the recommendation, it didn't get on the ballot till August and they were done in April. Is that good or not? I don't know.
That's what I need to ask. I don't know.
My guess would be as long as you have that group making the recommendation. But yeah, we'll get that question answered.
I think if any, anything we think about is, is putting this together starting for December. Then eleven months from now, that puts that group still in position for one year beyond the vote. They give us both time. And they get ready to March, April. For the allocation committee, vote in August or November. Everybody's covered on both ends.
So Bob, you're saying that we would not address this till December of this year? And the committee wouldn't be put together till April of next year?
Committee be ready to sit March, April, or whatever the days were um, for the ballot in November. Or August, either one.
I don't know what's better, but. Yeah, I don't either.
I think.
It's, it's a presidential election year. So, you know, that's your biggest turnout.
I do think though that staff should be working on things though. At least for, if we're going to pursue this, at least staff should be working on. Backfinding and all the answers to all the questions so that we're ready, you know, to go. If that's the case.
And even with Headley, we've, we're deening a little.
Yeah, just a little.
I understand. That's what it was set up to do. We're increasing taxes that never, never stop. As government has its tendency to eat itself and just continue to suck in all they can. So um. So it has accomplished that, but we've just fallen behind.
Correct.
But it's, yeah, our expenses have outpaced.
Right.
Any revenue for sure. And so it, it hasn't been a dollar for dollar trade. And. We've been able to maintain the business of the community, I think, quite well. But we haven't been able to implement any real vision. You know, what's the need twenty years from now that I need to start making that investment today to make sure that happens? The people that are moving into our communities are people that are coming from communities where these elevated services are already there. And they come here, and even though we talk about, well, you move here because of quality of life, they still want these things. And we're at our present um, budget levels, we really aren't positioned to provide them.
They want both things that work. They want the quality of what we have right now. But they want what they left behind as well.
Exactly.
Because they don't know how to get by like we do.
But, but it's our job to anticipate that need.
So if you were asked to be specific about what would be visionary of this board to be thinking about the future? How would you answer that question?
Well, it, that's going to require a lot of conversation. It's going to have to be an understanding of what are these different groups that do. Uh, surveys for their master plans and their strategic plans. I'd like to look at all of that. But if I had to say today, what do I pinpoint? Um, I can see real value in Benzie County being able to make the investment in someone that oversees Parks and Rec. And economic development. Because both of those things, I believe, represent quality of life and moving your community forward. But we just can't afford that right now. These are things that are revenue generating. They, they bring in new tax dollars. Uh, they, a Parks and Rec meets the needs of people that are coming here that expect the beautiful things that we have. Um, and to improve on those. Uh, but we just don't have the recent, the human resources to do it. We rely strictly on volunteers. And in the twenty-five years that I've been here, and I know that's not much compared to some of you. Um, we've never been able to get there. You know, we've always been able to be status quo, but it seems like. Uh, we make little changes and I think we're going to have to be prepared to make bigger changes. But to be more specific, or I guess be more broad, Rhonda, it, we're going to have to look at what's the community really saying they want.
No, and I, you know, I agree with you to the point that this, the Parks and Rec feasibility study is in the works.
Right.
You know, we're going to get a recommendation from them and if you, but I mean, I, I agree with you that we have too much public lands to not be good stewards of it. And that's going to take more than we have right now. And the economic development, you know, the conversations that are starting there. Get with those go.
And I, and I'd like to think, us to think about these things as investments rather than expenses. If we can get a return on what we're doing, then that's the right thing. If it just keeps a status quo, that's a bad investment. So my recommendation would be, as one commissioner, is I would not put this on the shelf till December. In December, by the end of December, I'd like us to have a program put together that all we have to do is put together that board. And sit down with them and express why we want to go down this road, because I got to imagine that's part of it. And then do whatever it is they have to do, because I have no idea what that is.
Well, they can take two different routes. Um, they can go the petition route or a resolution route. Um, because there is that opportunity for the petition route where they have to have four percent. Of the elected electorate sign the petition to bring it forward. I think four percent is called out in the law.
Four percent to put it on the ballot or what?
Yeah, so, or, oops, hold on. Yeah, I vote on adopting tax limitations shall be initiated by petition. Signed by not less than four percent of the registered electors of each township and city within the county. The petition shall be filed with the county clerk not less than thirty days before the convening of the board and regular session. The board regular session in this situation though, is the tax allocation board. So the community could put together a petition to force you to form the tax allocation board. Is what I'm understanding.
That's a community or.
And it's four percent of each municipality.
Don't see that. So four percent of total population?
No, it's of each individual township and city. So four percent of each individual.
So even if one had ten percent, that doesn't count towards somebody else's.
No, everyone has to have a minimum of four.
So you'd, you know, you'd rely on your townships to get their signatures?
And that was part of the problem when they had, or not part of the problem. When they did, it set up a tax allocation board, or they attempted to, if I make memories with the crap. There was one or two townships that didn't want the money. And that put the kibosh to the whole thing. So something to think about.
So every community has to get at least four percent. First, remember for us in our county, what is that, about eight hundred signatures total?
Uh, not a ton.
Or we could do a resolution from this board, if I'm understanding that correctly. You don't have to get the, the signatures.
Generated. Yeah.
That was just another.
I'm saying, quit going down that road.
I thought you were saying we had to.
Sign me eight hundred citizens that want to increase their taxes. I'll be right there with you.
Give me six months, I'll get it for you.
Well, I think, I think we need to approach it potentially though, not only completely detailing and. You know, painting a nice picture for the community of the benefits. In a situation like this, not only should we paint a really nice picture as to the benefits, but I think we need to offer some sort of compromise too. As part of the change. So maybe it's not get rid of, you know, all of these little millages to do this. But we need to have some sort of compromise with the change. Yes, your taxes are going to increase. But we are going to, you know, maybe these two little millages are going to come within the general fund or. Have some sort of compromise with the illustration of change.
You could be talking about sunsetting some of those millages.
Exactly.
It doesn't mean that you have to cut it off right then to your concern.
Yeah.
Let's see what happens. No, you have to build a lot of trust with your constituents for that. Because for what we say we're going to do, I want to use a school as the example. You know, we thought that that sinking fund was not going to be uh, assessed and sure enough it is. So you have to build up the confidence, but.
And I think we're, I think we're starting to do that based on the success we had with all of our little millages. Everyone told me and time and time and again, I was setting the county up for failure. For all of those millages going on at one time, and I was never going to get any of them passed. I got all the shame, shame because of the jail mileage. And you know what? The community trusted us. But we provided the information that they wanted.
Anybody remember what the jail mileage passed by?
No, it was like seven or eight hundred. I, voters, I think.
When you talk as percentages, it, it has actually passed pretty readily. And with the, I don't know about you guys, but when I talked about the uh, road patrol in the evenings. Most of people are saying, about time.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I said, well, you understand that costs more. We're really just on a three-year trial period. That's okay. It's about time.
Yep.
So how much time has administration had to review this twenty twenty document?
Uh, so I reviewed it when I first came on board and then I haven't looked at it much since. Um, Rose reviewed it when she was putting together all of the one-pagers and that little booklet regarding your guide to proposal and Headley. So she referenced this a little bit when she was putting that together. But we haven't taken a deep dive into it in the recent months because, you know, we had kind of put it on the back burner. And so we had other things we were pressing on.
Because I think that's probably one of the, the very next steps is updating this with current data.
But is this what we want? Or do we want to try an easier approach? Because I think some of this. I don't even know if any of it, some of this is relevant anymore, like this municipal analytics. I don't even know. How relevant this document to have in there.
Well, I think that's why it needs to be reviewed.
Yeah.
I mean, I do think the easy route, I think we're learning that based on what we've seen, but I do think you have to have a document like this that's defendable. Defending why we're doing what we're doing for the people who want this level of information. Some people don't require it. Some voters don't require it. They're going to go on face value that we wouldn't ask if we didn't need it. Other voters are going to need to be convinced. And so a document like this shows that we have been looking this, looking at this for a very long time and have.
Well, I think we need two documents though, because you're going to have a dozen people who want this. And then you're going to have eighty-seven who want a two-pager.
Right. Yeah, the executive summary.
Yeah. We're going to have to approach it in both ways. Um, we're going to have to do that. And we still have. The Guide to Property Taxes Proposal and Headley Amendment on our website. And they're still on our counters and people still take them. Which helps as a, you know, a breather into this more in-depth conversation.
I'm in Rhonda's court about having something with greater detail that if people want to do a deep dive, they can.
Okay.
And with respect to municipal analyticals, and, and, and listen.
Analytics.
Analytic works in there. Um, getting kind of dated.
Yeah.
When was that, four years ago now?
Yeah.
Uh, so, and that was a five-year forecast, but I think instead of spending the money again. It shows that we've been looking at this for a long time. This was helping us create a roadmap. And it said to us at the time, folks, you know, you might be running into a wall here if you're not careful.
Oh, it said unsustainable. That's what it said.
If you remember, they had different degrees of severity. So they had one that was average, extreme. Uh, moderate. I don't remember the language they used, but uh, so they broke it out both ways. For us to be broken, what'd they say, fifteen years or something? I think that was probably on the extreme.
Five year, we're supposed to see some drastic changes.
That we can only have like two hundred thousand.
Well, I, I was kind of surprised. They did not have the COVID stuff forecasted in here and included.
Right.
No, but I mean, that's what happens with rejection. Sometimes they're right on, sometimes.
So this says that the forecast suggests that the general fund will face an annual deficit each year. Resulting in a fund balance in twenty twenty-four of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. This represents a cumulative deficit of nearly one point five million over the next five years.
So what I'm getting at is, I was joking about the, but the ARPA funds really changed that.
And just funding in general. I mean. There's other funding.
What do we want? Administration to make some recommendations to us?
I think they need to, I think. Take a look at this.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing from you is you want our office to work to kind of revamp this book. As well as come up with an executive summary. Um, and then go from there. But kind of revamp the data that we have, come up with a, a nice executive summary. Um, and then really start having the conversations from there. Because this, this process is going to take us all of a year. Because there are certain things you have to get from all the local jurisdictions. And, you know, the people that they want on this committee are very busy people. And so it's going to take all of a year to really get our ducks in a row with a good plan to go to the community for.
Yes, you need to answer that question. Does that committee need to be in place as the voter being counted? Or.
Yep. And that's one of the questions that we need to ask of legal.
Yeah, but you'd want to approach these, because it's very specific, you'd want to approach these people in December. If we said in December. Yep, we've done our homework. We know we can justify what we're asking. Let's put the committee together. They know in December, then in April, they're, that committee is going to be formed.
And we knew a lot of the people when we were talking about this. I mean, we know it has to be our treasurer, Shelley Thompson, the township representative. Uh, Jason Bernard wanted to be on it. Our person at large, Jim Dulzo, was asked and accepted to participate. Was there an ISD candidate at the time? I can't remember who that person's.
It'd either be the finance person or.
Right, right.
When was all of that talked about though? Because I hesitate just assuming if it was five years ago. You know, we need to. You know, we need to put the reins out to.
I know Jason Bernard is still interested in serving.
But Rhonda, how long have you been on the board?
Uh, it's my fifth year.
So it probably goes back five years when we originally started talking about those individuals.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, what was your hesitancy about those folks and we? Is that they're different players now? Is that it?
There could be. That's all I'm saying. They may be the same players, but you know. We've had a lot of change in our county in just five years and people who live here and have moved here. And so maybe those aren't the right players anymore. I don't know. I, I, so I just don't want us to be blinded. You know, I don't want blinders on.
On the other hand, I want people that are open up, open-minded enough to want to advocate for it. I don't want somebody walking in saying, I'm looking for a reason to. Uh, decline it.
Yeah.
I need somebody that says, okay, well, I'm. I'm open to this. How is it that we can get it done?
Correct, yeah. But I do want a recommendation to set it appropriately. I'm not sure if the reset to the 5.29 is something that we can have our fingers crossed is going to happen. That would be a huge increase. That's a big jump.
You could say up to, but you're right.
You know, I'm saying the 5.29 doesn't mean we have to levy that.
Right.
Right.
And we've been using that language more frequently, saying up to, haven't we?
Yeah, we use the up to all the time, at least I do. But that's where I think if the board decides, let's go for the 5.29. That's when it's very important when you're presenting also the compromise as part of that change. So that people are seeing that, yes, we're going back to 5.29, but now they're not going to levy whatever. And so then it, you know, brings the, brings it closer together. So offering both the benefits of the change plus the compromise.
And some of those villages you could sunset without a whole lot of risk.
Right, yeah.
But you have to follow through.
Yes.
Reminds me of the school thing. With the sinking fund, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do this. Now, you did it.
Yeah.
And once you lose that trust. You might as well have stayed home.
Right.
And that's something we're going to be bucking because. Everybody fights for the same money.
Right.
You know, your community is probably more likely to support this if they see that we work well together. They see that we're progressive and we're trying to use this money to move us down the road and not necessarily to give increases in pay. Including ourselves and things that that doesn't benefit the community. You know, it's, I think they can be on board with that. You, you almost got to be careful. I'm, I'm, don't want to oversell this either. When we first started talking about this, I thought, man, we needed to reach every group in the community and sell it. You know, what I've learned over the last few years is don't oversell it. Just look what happened with the jail village. That brought in another 500,000.
Which was one of the reasons municipal analytics or whatever. We were going to be sinking like a rock. A lot of difference.
That's why I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant.
Right.
Because it does not factor in those changes that were made with the recent August election. You know, we're really on a different path now.
Right.
Okay, so would it be worth us having Katie explore with municipal analytics what they would charge us to update this?
I ca- I can. How much was it initially?
Thirty grand?
I don't remember at all.
Oh geez.
I can tell you, it is probably, it was a good investment based on my perspective. Because it really laid it out there for us where we're at. And okay, so the forecast didn't come true. Thank God.
Yeah.
But would anybody dis- uh disapprove if we ask Katie to at least find out what they were charged updated?
I don't know. It might be a whole new, given the timeline, they might not do an update. It would be a probably a whole new report.
In my opinion, we have a different level of expertise in administration with regard to the budget and the numbers and um. When we had municipal analytics do what they did, you know, we had an administrator who was very candid about the fact that he wasn't a numbers guy. And um, so I just, I, I think we give uh. Katie and Shelley a shot at it and see what you come up with as far as what we had and where we're at now. And then we decide if we want to go to the next step.
Okay.
So, because, because she, they are numbers people.
Yeah, so I, I get that, I get. The only thing I'm thinking of around is that sometimes third outside parties give more credibility to. Uh, the information you're sharing with the community, but I understand what you're saying.
Numbers are numbers.
No, I could give.
Saying projections with the municipal analytics, it just didn't come to fruition and.
I want to go back and look at that because they actually gave us three different outcomes.
Yeah, they did.
And we keep focusing on the one that said 200,000 or so. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that was like. The worst-case scenario, I think.
That was the, that was the normal, that was the.
Yeah, so.
He's looking at it right now.
Base, best case includes all revenue assumptions above except poverty tax revenues are assumed to increase to an app percent. So yeah, this is here, but this is G- um, general fund expenditure assumptions. And that's where they gave the best, worst, um, best, moderate and worst-case scenarios specifically for general fund expenditures. Um. That was in the, that starts on page 16 of the document and it's in those books. But as far as the revenues, there's, it, it's only for general fund expenditures. Where it gives that best, moderate and worst-case scenario that I'm seeing are.
So Katie, I don't have my glasses with me. This is smaller print.
Yeah.
What were the, can you tell what the best case and median and worst-case scenarios were?
So the best-case scenario was that all revenue assumptions. Above, so the revenue assumptions are salaries, MERS, medical, those things. Um, all of those assumptions are assumed to increase only by two and a half percent annually. Moderate assumption um is two percent, but that medical and dental would be 7.5. And worst case was you'd have to transfer from the DTRF at $50,000 to cover wages. If they only increased by two and a half percent and that medical and dental would increase by eight percent. But we actually had a decrease in medical also last year too by quite a bit.
Yeah, but how much was the average increase in salaries?
Um, so last year was two and a half, the year before that. I think was two and a half as well. And then I can't recall off the top of my head, I wasn't here. I'd have to look for the years before that.
When you say last year, you mean going into this year?
For fiscal, yeah. So on 10-1, there was a two and a half and on last 10-1, it was two and a half as well.
I think the page 18 there where it shows the three bar graphs. But they, and I thought they were basing most of this on about a two, two and a half wage increase.
That's what, yep, and that's what we got into the contracts was two and a half percent.
Okay.
How much is our general fund went down since 2019?
It's only increased.
And that's where it starts.
How much has it gone down since 2018?
It's, the general fund fund balance has increased every year. So that's my other fear with this is. What, you know, what data were they working off from?
So maybe we use this as a model with.
Well, I, the book, I, I think the book needs to just be revamped. Um, some of the attachments that are in here may not. May not be applicable anymore. Um, and at the end of the day, I just have a different approach of things than Mitch did. And so. There's going to be tweaks because we just have different approaches on things. And so. Um, we will, we will go through it and look at it and see what tweaks we can bank to it. Um, as well as try to put together a draft executive summary in our office and then bring that back to you all to start reviewing. And then I'll, in the meantime, work on getting some of those questions answered by Cole Stoker as well. And then um, we'll go from there.
It'd be interesting to see what you come up with.
Put the pressure on.
Katie, this is a project that we're talking about. We want to have completed by December. Um. When should we expect, what interval should we expect updates?
Well.
I hate to come to you in December and find out that you guys got stalled and because we weren't asking, it stayed stalled.
If we, if we tackle this in bytes, so tackle it in like, you know, the first three tabs, second three tabs kind of thing. I could comment you with updates more frequently. Um, but if you want a whole book approach, you're not going to get that well.
But what I would suggest, if others would agree, is like every quarter.
Okay.
You know, just like, you know how we're going to review the financial information every quarter? Just give us an update is where you're at. That way you don't fall behind.
Okay.
Well, I don't think that'd be accurate, right? We're looking for a completed document by December. Can't have quarterly updates.
I know.
Um, because it's.
Well, we'd be April 30th and then July 30th, right? Yeah, and then October 30th would be the next three updates.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Is that being, is that having the conversation consistently enough? To, to have the forward motion that we want?
I come from the school that what gets done is what's inspected, so. You know, I, I'd put it on the agenda frequently, but I'm trying to, I, based on my, my experience with Katie and she does follow through. I figured every quarter I'd be okay. But, you know, no, you could make an argument that if. Get more frequent.
Well, why don't we make it a little more fluid than that? Because if, we'll tackle it in, in bytes, so in chunks. And some of these chunks are, you know, pretty minimal. But then you get into some that are a bit more detailed and, you know. So why don't we just make it a little more fluid than that? And um, some may take a little longer and some would be shorter. Because some of these tabs are pretty straightforward items, so there's not going to be, you know, a whole lot of update or changes to it.
Now, is the tax allocation committee going to be dependent on this data? To make the considerations they need to make? Are they going to be relying on a document that we prepare?
Well, they're still going to have to, I, my understanding of the tax allocation board is there's still hoops that they have to do and jump through and calculate. Um, but this, I think, would give them that really strong jump to get started. But then there's still action that that tax allocation board has to, there's steps that they have to take and do and act. But I think this would help them make those actions.
Until the answer from Cole Stoker about how long is their decision valid?
Yes.
Is, will kind of gauge and give us a timeline for what we need to do next with that portion.
That too, yes.
And they want us to form that board sooner than later.
Correct. Right, and then next year, then they're reappointed. The board, because those few positions are appointed by another person, the judge. So. And Tammy gets to come to every meeting because the statute says you have to.
Probably won't have that many meetings.
I think that's where I read all the minutes.
Right, have we settled our conversation on the Headley?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Effort, okay, excellent. I'm going to open the last public comment.
I'd just like to commend you guys as a board. I've been here for many years and I'm impressed with you all. You seem to do all your research before just voting yes on something. And you honestly all seem to have the taxpayers at heart. So I just want to commend you. I thought today was appropriate from earlier and.
Thank you.
You all seem to work well together.
Thanks for that, Paul.
Could you put that in writing?
Go back to it anytime.
Then I would close public comment and look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.